I call to order the February 20th regular meeting of the School District of River Falls Board of Education. This meeting has been properly notified, and we will begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any visitors or delegations who would like to address the board this evening? All right, then we are going to move on to informational items. And the first one is a joy for us because we get to present three Wildcat Pride Awards. So Todd?
Yeah.
You're up.
I'm gonna go up here. Is this one? You can hear me? Good. So I'm gonna start by calling up Brooks Revard and Luke Linehan. They were just sharing their story with me a little bit, and I had not heard what happened, but I would say this definitely falls under the category for deserving Wildcat Pride. To Brooks and Luke, we would like to present and extend gratitude and appreciation for your heroic gesture. On December 23rd, 2022, you stopped to help rescue a stranded River Falls family, strangers that you have no connection with, on a cold snowy night. Your help prevented a substantial accident from becoming a terrible tragedy. On behalf of Lily, Bridgette, and Mike, as well as the entire River Falls community, thank you for being outstanding citizens and a valued member of our community.
Need to turn that on. My goodness, that really is worthy of a Wildcat Pride Award. I don't think anything more needs to be said after that.
So, and I wasn't entirely familiar, but they came across a situation where there was an accident and there needed some quick thinking and help, and it sounds like they stepped in and did what was needed. The second award that we've got today is for Calvin Poole. Calvin, if you'd like to come up? And I guess this is a surprise. I think this is the first one we've had that's a surprise. Calvin? Calvin, the Board of Education would like to extend gratitude and appreciation for your generosity in providing much-needed support for our Renaissance students. Thanks to you, our students have received much-needed clothing and homemade meals. As a restorative services community circle facilitator, you have also provided our students with a safe place to share their experiences, hardships, and dreams without judgment. You are there to celebrate student successes and listen when students are facing tough situations. You make time for everyone and lead by example. All of our days are brighter when you come to the Renaissance. You are a true ambassador of Wildcat Pride.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah. Chris, did you want to share a few words too?
Yeah, so, sure. You know, you never quite know who you're getting when help is sent our way, and restorative services has been excellent in terms of providing us quality support and folks to lead our community circle. But this man has been just outstanding, and our kids just wait for him at the door to come, you know, with their tails wagging. And, you know, he treats them, if it's their birthday, he's gonna bring in cupcakes, and he loves to celebrate, like I said, with us, and we're just thrilled to work with him. So Calvin, thank you so much for what you do.
I think that these two awards that we've presented tonight really show a lot about who we are as a River Falls community. To think that young people would stop and help others in need that they don't even know, that's a tremendous gift. That is really speaks to the essence of your character, so thank you. And for a volunteer to come and spend so many days with our students, helping them to learn and to grow and to feel important, I can't think of anything more significant. So thank you very much. And I have to say, I'm pretty impressed with the Renaissance folks that you kept this a secret. We don't usually have surprise awards, so impressive. All right, now we are going to move on to hear a demographic report. The school board, yes, you're all... You've been through the best part of the meeting so far.
Promise my stuff isn't that boring, but I guess.
So the school board commissioned a demographic study, and tonight is the day when we are going to be able to hear from Nick Johnson, who is going to walk us through the core of the report. And this is the board's chance to be able to ask questions of the demographer himself. So my suggestion is that, for the most part, we let him get through his slides unless there's something of, you know, a quick question of clarification, and then we can have conversation and discussion once the presentation is over.
Perfect. That sounds great, thank you. Again, I'm Nick Johnson. I'm a planner and project manager with M.D. Roffers Consulting. We're a consulting firm based in Madison, but we work with school districts mainly, as well as other cities, villages, and towns as urban planners across the state of Wisconsin. I'm here to chat to you all about today, our community growth and student enrollment projections effort, which began last fall and then wrapped up in January. So an outline of our presentation. So first, I'll start with some recent trends. This will give a good foundational knowledge as to what's been happening over the last decade in your district. Housing trends, demographic trends, enrollment trends, all of that. Then I'll get into an overview of our projection methodology, how we came to our projections, then get into our housing projections, our student enrollment projections, comparing our enrollment projections to capacities of your school buildings, and then wrap things up in what that means for your district. So over the past decade, we've seen increasing enrollment in the River Falls School District, especially at the middle and high school level. 4K enrollment and grade 5K to 5 enrollment remain fairly steady, increased slightly. Grade 6 to 8 enrollment, that's in the blue line that you see there, increased by about 125 students over the last decade. And then about half of the enrollment growth over the past decade was in the grades 9 through 12 at River Falls High School. That's that green line that you see in the graph. Your population in your district is also growing. It grew by about 8% over the last decade, from 2010 to 2020. That's using census data. However, most of that increase was in the population aged 50 and older. The population aged 5 to 19, your children-aged population, increased by about 300 residents, which is pretty much in line with our enrollment growth that we saw. The population aged 25 to 44, so these are those of reproductive age, it essentially remained stable, decreasing by about 20 residents from 2010 to 2020. Not surprisingly, we saw births also remain fairly stable in your district over the past decade, really helping to only explain modest increases in that enrollment, with the other explanation is people moving into your district that have been born elsewhere. The vast majority of children born in your district are born in the city of River Falls, with about 2 out of 10 born in some of your outlining towns. I'm sure you all know there's been significant housing construction in your district. Over the past decade, there's been just over 1,600 new housing units built in your district, with about 63% of those being single-family homes. About 70% of housing units were built in the city of River Falls, about 20% in the town of Troy, and then 10% in other towns in your district. That average over the past 10 years is about 165 housing units per year. You can see that that pace has accelerated in the last few years. 2020 was really a banner year for new housing construction in your district, with over 300 new housing units built, including 100 single-family homes. 2021, things decreased a little bit, but since, increased in 2022. That number's through October for 215 new housing units in 2022. All of this matters as different housing types produce different numbers of students for your district. And this is something that we see with all of the school districts we work with. New single-family homes typically produce the most students, then more established single-family homes in neighborhoods produce a modest amount, and then town homes, apartments, condominiums produce the fewest, with new apartment buildings typically producing the fewest number of students. As part of our effort, we did a new homeowner survey, so we sent a survey to 300 newly-built single-family homes in your district over the past five years. Survey results show about .55 students from each new single-family home. So you need about two homes to produce one student for your district. If you think of a 100-unit, single-family subdivision of 100 single-family homes, there would be about 55 students coming from that neighborhood. A lot of folks think that each home produces two students, you know, two parents, two kids, a cat and a dog, or something like that, but it's about half of a single-family home, or half of a student is produced from a single-family home. New multiple-family units on the flip side generate about .12 students, so a 100-unit apartment building would produce about 12 students for your district. Pre-existing multiple-family generates about a .23 student-per-housing-unit ratio. It's a little bit higher. Older apartments tend to be a little bit more affordable, tend to have more children than newer apartments. Housing turnover is not always translating to student enrollment increases. This is map three from our report showing where single-family homes have been sold in your district over the past five years, with the darker purple color showing where there's been greater amounts of single-family homes sold, and therefore greater turnover to new families. Single-family homes tend to produce the most students within the first 10 years of being built. Afterwards, the number of students tends to decrease until about a 30-year timeframe, when that housing turns over to new families. In some high-turnover neighborhoods that you see in that map, enrollment did increase over the past five years, but in several others, it remained stable, or it actually even decreased, suggesting that those new families moving in aren't necessarily bringing with them children. Getting into an overview of our methodology, this is map two from our report showing our elementary attendance areas and our neighborhood boundaries. We divided the district into 64 unique neighborhoods. These act as just smaller puzzle pieces for us to break down your large district into smaller pieces that we can do unique projections for. Those neighborhoods are based on other characteristics like subdivisions, major roads, highways, rivers, other major geographic barriers, as well as your elementary school attendance areas. We then allocated the housing units for each neighborhood in the fall of 2022, so we know exactly how many housing units are within each of your 64 neighborhoods. We did that using 2020 census data and then using permitting data from the city and from the towns to get that updated 2022 figure. Using student address data from 2022, we were able to place every student within each of those neighborhoods, and then with the number of housing units determine how many students are being generated per the number of housing units in each neighborhood. We then analyzed demographic change within each neighborhood, as well as future housing expectations. We did this through several factors. So we first met with the city of River Falls, had virtual meetings with some of the towns, and to discuss their future plans for development, where they're planning to grow. This map here on the right shows the northern kind of growth area for the city of River Falls. We also met with local planners, local developers, realtors, other real estate experts to get their opinion as to what's happened in the market over the last few years, where it's going in the next five to 10 years. We then projected housing unit growth for our projection periods, so 2024, 2027, 2030, and 2035. We have enrollment projections for each of those periods too. We then projected student-per-housing-unit ratios within each of our 64 neighborhoods, and then within those neighborhoods, each grade group, and then for each projection Then it really becomes a math problem. We multiply our projected housing units in each neighborhood by our student-per-housing-unit ratios. That gives us our resident-student enrollment projections. And then the last step is we assign projected resident students to each school and program in the River Falls School District, including Montessori Elementary and Renaissance Academy. Getting into our projections, our housing projections, we project 2,800 new housing units in your district by 2035. That's about 215 per year, so about a 30% increase from what we've seen over the past decade. However, 39% of the housing we project through 2035 will be in the form of single-family homes. That's significantly down from the 63% that we saw over the past decade. So more and more multiple-family coming. Over 80% of the housing that we project, that 2,800 units, 80% of that we project in the city of River Falls, with only about one out of every four new housing units as a single-family home in the city. The remaining 20% of new housing is projected mostly in the northern towns in your district, so the town of Troy and the town of Kinniknik, and all of that being in the form of single-family We project that increase and that shift from more single-family over the past decade to more multiple-family over the next 12 to 13 years for several reasons. The first is several recently developed apartments have been very successful, they've been filled up immediately, have low vacancy rates. Milton residences, Peregrine Terrace apartments, developers have seen that there is demand and the need for this type of housing in your district. The city is also very supportive for new multiple-family housing development, redeveloping older areas of the city, but also including multiple-family development in new neighborhoods as well. There's also been a housing shortage over the past decade, really after the Great Recession in the River Falls area, the larger Twin Cities metro, and the state of Wisconsin. We just simply haven't built enough homes to keep up with demand. Part of the reason why housing prices have been increasing so significantly over the past few years, higher interest rates as well. A family may have been able to afford a mortgage at a 3% or 4% interest rate, but they can't maybe now at a 7% interest rate. So there's just gonna be greater demand for multiple-family housing, as those folks still have to live somewhere. Generational shifts also come into play. The large baby boom population is now in their 60s and 70s, beginning to retire, maybe want to downsize, move out of their single-family home, don't want the maintenance that comes with a single-family home, so they might move to a townhome or a condo, or some other type of senior living. This is map five from our report showing our, or map four from our report showing our projected housing unit growth by neighborhood. So this is what we like to call a heat map. So the warmer the colors, the reds and oranges are where we project more housing development in your district through 2035. And we see that they're almost entirely concentrated in the northern part of the city of River Falls, really along the Highway 35 and Radio Road corridor, where we project well over 1,000 housing units in that area through 2035. Broken down by the three elementary school attendance areas that you see here, our housing unit projections show that we project just over half of all of those housing units will be located in the West Side Elementary Attendance Area. The next one is Greenwood Elementary, where we project just over 800 new housing units, and then a lesser extent in the Rocky Branch Elementary Attendance Area, about just under 500 new housing units, really showing that pull in development and demand towards the Hudson-Twin Cities area to the north of your district. That's a lot about new housing, but we know that what happens in existing housing also has a major impact on enrollment in your district. And because of that, we analyze several characteristics of existing neighborhoods that contribute to projected resident enrollment changes. So these are a handful of the eight or nine or so that are factored into our model. The number of home sales in a neighborhood over the past five years, but where we anticipate more home sales over the next five to 10 years. The mixture of housing types in each neighborhood, so if that neighborhood's built out, is it mostly single-family homes, is it mostly apartments, is it a mixture? And then how the enrollment has changed over the past five years, has it been increasing over the past five years, remaining stable or decreasing? And then the last is housing age, with the understanding that a lot of modern families today are more so looking for homes built in the 1980s and later. They tend to be bigger, at least three bedrooms, at least two bathrooms. Housing that's built in the 1970s and older tends to have fewer bedrooms, fewer bathrooms, might be more of a starter home for a family without children or with a toddler or infant, but especially if they have more children, they typically move into a newer, larger home with some of those amenities. Getting into our actual enrollment projections, we project by 2035 an increase of just over 400 additional 4K to 12 resident students, or about 32 additional per year. Grade 4K, we did a projection for, even though we understand most of them are housed at community partner sites, except for a handful at Montessori Elementary. Grades 4K to 5 in your four elementary school buildings, we project an increase of 275 students. Grade 6 to 8, an increase of 55, and grades 9 through 12, an increase in 30. This does assume that the number of resident students attending private schools, attending being homeschooled or open-enrolling out to other districts remains at a constant rate as today. And this is just a resident enrollment projections, it does not include students open-enrolling in either. This is map five from our report showing our grades 5K to 12 enrollment projections, also a heat map with the reds and the orange color showing where there's greater increases in projected enrollment change, with those two main areas in the northern part of the city of River Falls, as well as the eastern part of the city. Looking at elementary schools, grades 5K to 5, we project an additional 275 5K to 5 resident students by 2035, for a few reasons. The first is increasing numbers of move-ins from outside of your district. The second is increasing numbers of births from the large millennial group. The millennials are now the largest population-wise generation alive in America. I say "we" because I'm smack dab in the middle, I'm 32 years old, millennials range from 26 to 41, and we're beginning to have children finally. I myself have an 18-month-old daughter, so we're finally starting to have kids. So we do anticipate births increasing in your district over the next 12 to 13 years or so. And then also new housing construction, particularly single-family homes, which tends to bring younger children, families with infants, toddlers, elementary school-age children.
Which one of our elementary school districts are you gonna move to?
Yeah, right. Anywhere. Sure, yeah, there you go. This is map six, a heat map for the elementary school grades, grades 5K to 5. We project those increases focused in those two areas, the northern edge of the city along the Radio Road corridor, as well as a future city growth area east of County Highway U and west of Radio Road. Then the second is in the eastern edge of the city in the Highview Meadows neighborhood. That neighborhood currently has significantly more elementary school students today, so by 2035, a lot of those elementary school kids will be in high school, as well as a future city growth area that's located north of the hospital. Looking at Meyer Middle School, grades 6 to 8, we project enrollment there will increase by about 55 resident students by 2035, with enrollment remaining essentially stable through 2030 due to smaller current grade 5K to 5 class sizes, but then increasing from 2030 to 2035. Also, enrollment increases, they are focused on the north and east side of the city of River Falls, as well as some town of Kinniknik neighborhoods. In River Falls High, grades 9 through 12, we project enrollment will increase by about 30 students by 2035, with it also similar to Meyer Middle, remaining pretty stable through 2030, but then that increase between 2030 and 2035 due to projected elementary enrollment increases this decade in the 2020s. And also focused really along the Radio Road corridor, as well as in Highview Meadows. This is a table from our report showing our enrollment projections, broken down by grade group in the gray rows, and then by each school in the white rows. The yellow highlighted cells are where we anticipate some capacity issues, and that leads us nicely into the next section, comparing our projections to your school building capacities. This is, the last row that you see in this table is grades 4K to 5 in your four River Falls School District elementary schools. The total combined capacity of your four elementary schools today is 1,537 students, and you can see that we project enrollment to exceed that shortly after 2030, so within the next 10 years or so, and then be about 70 students above the combined elementary school capacity by 2035. Again, this is just based on resident students only, so if you continue to have open-enrolling kids at your elementary school level, that could be exceeded a little bit sooner. This graph got a little smushed, but this shows are essentially the same information that was on this slide, where Greenwood Elementary exceeds capacity shortly after 2030, and then West Side also exceeds capacity after 2030, with Montessori and Rocky Branch Elementary enrollment at both of those schools remaining fairly stable. Looking at middle school and high school, Meyer Middle is projected to remain about 125 students below capacity through 2035. River Falls High is also projected to remain below capacity, with excess capacity of about 140 students, so no capacity issues seen there at the higher grade levels, grade 6 to 12. Wrapping things up in what this means for you all, by 2035, we project an increase of just over 400 resident students, with the increases broken down by those grade groups there. Overall, adequate capacity at Meyer Middle and River Falls High to accommodate our projected resident grade 6 through 12 enrollment through 2035. Capacity at the high school could be tested around the 2035 mark, if you have a constant number of students open-enrolling in us today, but that's unknown if there will be that many open-enrolling students in 2035. However, without changes, Greenwood and West Side Elementary will have the capacity, will have capacity issues within the next eight to 10 years or so, so the early 2030s, and definitely be over capacity by 2035. That image in the right is kind of a screenshot of our map to our elementary attendance areas. That neighborhood 59, the Sterling's Pond neighborhood, is in island, it's discontinuous from the other Rocky Branch Elementary Attendance Area. Shifting that from Rocky Branch to either Greenwood or West Side would cause either of those schools to exceed capacity sooner, likely by the late 2020s, and could even challenge a potential longer-term solution for your district. Several districts that we've worked with have excess capacity at the middle school level, so they've taken fifth graders from elementary school and shifted them to middle school, but we don't think that that would be possible here, as Meyer Middle would exceed capacity almost immediately, adding the fifth graders to it. So any fifth-grade shift to the middle school would have to be accompanied by some sort of capacity expansion at that school. Projected elementary school capacity issues could be addressed through several different scenarios, so expanding one or more of your current four elementary schools, building a fifth elementary school, that would also be accomplished by shifting and redrawing your attendance areas, or some other possible solution, or a combination of expansions or building a new school. School capacity would ideally be expanded close to some of those enrollment hotspots where we see enrollment increasing, the northern part of the city or the far eastern part of the city. The district does own 37 acres that are vacant on the far west side of the city. That's shown in that hashed kind of parcel there in the map in the right with that red circle around it. If a fifth elementary school were pursued, that vacant site probably wouldn't be the greatest location for it. It is far from projected enrollment increases on the north and east sides. Most of that surrounding land to the north and west of that parcel is actually planned for future industrial use, so there wouldn't be a walking zone really for that school as that area's planned for industrial use, and you would also have warehouses or other types of industrial use located to a school, which isn't always as desired. And it's also within one mile of West Side and Montessori Schools, so your schools are already fairly clustered in the central part of your district, and it would just cluster them even more, especially on the west side of the city of River Falls. That site could be better suited for a second middle school at some point in the future, as Meyer Middle is on the opposite side of the city of River Falls, but some of those same drawbacks apply with being located close to industrial areas, as well as not having a walking zone. So the district could explore selling that 37-acre vacant site and possibly acquiring land elsewhere, potentially the northern portion of the district. Other factors do come into play here when determining school facility needs, like school condition, the age of each school, the location of each school within the district, but also in relation to other schools, the site area of the school, as well as nearby neighborhoods and walking zones all do come into play. So our last recommendation is that the district consider a long-range facility planning effort within the next few years, in which all of these additional factors and a range of different scenarios and options can be considered. This image that you see on the right is part of a facility planning effort that we did with the Oregon School District located outside of Madison, where they were experiencing capacity issues at their elementary and their intermediate grade levels. They have an elementary middle, elementary, intermediate, middle, and high, so we helped them determine their configuration there from a variety of different scenarios. And with that, I'd be more than happy to take any questions or comments any of you
This is really good information and very helpful for us, because enrollment is so critical to our budgets and our planning, academic planning, and we've talked a lot here as a group, that even as these shift, you know, if we get 50 more students in one of our buildings, they may not all end in the same class. So it's not like you can just add one. So it's not like you could just add one teacher in Westside if it's growing, because they're going to spread out. So this gets pretty complicated for us, so it's helpful. As I see this, my thought is, give or take a little, our enrollment's pretty stable for the next 10 years. It's going to be up a little, and you're projecting up, and I'd rather you project up than down. But it wouldn't take much to move this either direction, either higher up, or actually to have a decline. But the one thing I've noticed in this, just in this region, is that for us, we're looking at sort of some consistent enrollment and maybe a little bit of an increase. Hudson, on the other hand, which is adjacent to us, has been experiencing enrollment decline for a number of years, and their report shows them continuing to decline. So I'm wondering what you see that's, and you haven't studied Hudson, but I'm trying to figure out, so what's so much different than us, other than we're a really good district? Maybe we're just a better town and a better district? I don't know. But what might those factors be that a town like Hudson would see a decline and we would see a?
Sure. If I, I don't know too much about Hudson, but I feel like a lot of it was probably developed in the 2000s, a lot of new subdivisions being built there. Would that possibly be accurate? So my guess is that they likely have, with a lot of that development that occurred in the 2000s, they have a lot of large, their high school class sizes are fairly large right now, I would imagine. And that's what we're seeing in a lot of other districts across the state, that they have large high school classes, they're being replaced by smaller and smaller classes. So overall, their enrollment's decreasing, and decreasing more so at the high school level. That's what I would imagine. We've seen that in several districts where we've done projections for, and we've had them increasing at the elementary school level, but decreasing at the high school just because they have such a large, large high school class sizes. Wisconsin also as a whole had a lot of births in the 2000s, 2004, 2005, 2006. They're all now 16, 17, 18 years old, and births have just decreased since then. Except over the last two years, from 2020 to 2021, and 21 to 22, we actually did see a slight increase in births the first time in well over a decade. So I think that could be, could be part of it.
I think Hudson's issue is probably affordability as well. I know you mentioned that you surveyed, I think it was 300-some, single-family housing, but did you survey any multifamily homes, or did I miss that?
We did not do that. We did do an analysis, so we got that ratio, I think it was .12. Yeah, so we were able to, we know certain apartments, how many housing units are in there, and then using student address data from the district, we said, oh, this, you know, there's, just to make it easy, 1,000 housing units, multiple family, that we analyzed, there would have been 120 students with addresses within those multiple-family complexes.
How do you get at birth rates? For our hospital here, for example, we don't, they don't do deliveries anymore, so we've got a community of this size, and all the, all the kids are being born
Elsewhere.
Outside of our district or our hospital. So how do you, how do you do that? How do you get at the birth rates when you don't have a hos, you know, it's easy if everybody was being born here?
Yeah, so we actually receive our birth data from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. So we have a contact there that we reach out to, and they're able to provide us birth data by municipality, so by the city, town, and that's just as to where they say their residences.
So it doesn't matter where the child is born?
Correct.
Born in Hudson or the cities or somewhere else?
Correct.
You still can identify that that, that birth is a River Falls?
Exactly. Yep, so our births would be like, city of River Falls had 100 births, town of Troy had 15 births, or something like that. Where their residence is, exactly.
And that would capture Minnesota hospitals as well, if they lived in River Falls.
That's exactly right, yep.
One of the things I noticed on this is that the bulk of, and you've said this several times, but you've said it as Troy Township, but the bulk of our enrollment growth and population growth appears to be in St. Croix County. Is, does that have any implications for us if the growth is in St. Croix County instead of Pierce County jurisdictionally, mil rate, tax base, anything like that? Doesn't really matter to us if our residents are in St. Croix or Pierce County?
I don't think so. Each of the municipalities have their own share of our total mil rate, and, you know, they all get affected differently by the amount of housing and development in their own municipality. But collectively, I think it's not going to affect our, our district in a unique or different way, other than obviously our capacity issues.
I'd have to think it through a little bit more, but on the top of my head, it, it would probably, I think it would maybe impact taxpayers in other areas, maybe more so, because if, if the, if the value is going up in, you know, in general, the, but the, whatever the levy amount is, could be divided by a larger pie, basically. So it might, I don't think that there's any implication, other than the people who are paying taxes now might pay less in taxes potentially, or if, if there's, if there's additional value added to the district. But it also depends on what, what amount we can levy to. So I think, to me, it seems like it's more of a, the same thing that happens when they reassess everyone's property, and, and your valuation could go up, but your tax bill could actually go down. That's the first thing that jumps out to me, is something like that could end up happening potentially, depending on how, how much value gets added.
I also noticed, did I read this right, that you're projecting that the Montessori will not only not grow, but decline?
We had Montessori remaining stable, so we just had a constant number of students from the other three elementary school attendance areas, remaining that number constant as today, that those students would choose Montessori. So I think there were 63 students that live in the Rocky Branch Elementary attendance area, but actually attend Montessori. We just had that number remaining constant.
Okay.
Yeah, those figures are in probably step seven or step eight of our report. But it gives a little more specific information as to how we did that.
So for us, when you talked about those buildings, those other three buildings possibly growing or not, you know, Rocky stay on the same, but maybe Westside and Greenwood seeing more enrollment pressure, that might be mitigated by if, for example, if the Montessori were to grow. I mean, one of the considerations we've got is we're trying to do long-range planning here, do 10 years from now, well, we need another elementary building, we should probably be thinking about that now and where we would cite it, and all that sort of thing. However, if enrollment doesn't really grow that much, can we juggle it internally? And we already know that four classroom buildings, but taps out our buildings for periods during the day, and for music support, PE support, library counselors, all those kinds of things. So if we went to five classroom buildings, that has implications for us. With this bit of growth, it seems hard for me to think that we would actually build a whole new elementary school. But, so anyway, that's why I'm kind of wondering about, it's good news that you're projecting some increase for us, but it's not enough of increase for us to really think about adding another building. We're already running at capacity in all of our elementary classes, unlike some neighboring districts which are not at capacity right now, and especially if they're experiencing declining enrollment, so.
I have a question for you about open enrollment. And so you've said that you have held those numbers steady. Is that because you're simply using that as an assumption, or do you have data in history from work in other districts to suggest the, the trajectory of open enrollment?
Yeah, we have kept, so our projections don't include students open enrolling into your district, but we just keep a, a constant number of resident students choosing to open enroll out as today, as we have no indication as to how that may change in the future. If some state law might happen, that would change that, or if, you know, open enrollment out also is based on, you know, what other neighboring school districts are doing, can impact that. So we, we didn't know which way, one way or the other, what, what would happen. So we just kept it constant to be safe.
Because I wonder if that, if neighboring districts experience declining enrollment, one could assume that, that opportunities can shift for students, sometimes not necessarily positively, and that could put added pressure for people to come to a district that is not experiencing declining enrollment. Is that a logical consideration?
I would say so.
Well, we, we get control over
We do.
Those numbers, too. I mean, I think that's the other part of it, is, is if, if adding 100 kids open enrolled in the elementary is going to take them over capacity, you know, we're probably going to have more discussion about, about what, what we're willing to take.
We do.
And I think that's been part of it with, with Renaissance Charter Academy.
But there has to be interest
Yeah.
In coming, so that, that is something we have to keep track of. Another question, were you able to review the demographic information from the city? I thought that you were going to have access to that. I mean, I'm wondering how their projections match with what you're looking at.
Yeah, so we met with the city. We had about a two-hour working session with them a few months ago, where we discussed housing development, demographic changes, things like that. So we did access all of the data and use all of the data that they did provide us. I know they do their own, like, internal projections. The state also does projections by municipality as well. And I, I know our projections were higher than what the state had projected. I can't remember how they differed from the city, though. Housing unit projections is what I'm talking about.
Jamie, where, this is, this report is available on our website, or will be available on our district's website?
Yeah, right now, currently, it's listed as a link on this board agenda, the presentation here. And we also have a little two-pager. It's, we asked you guys to give us kind of your version of an executive summary.
Right.
And so, yeah, if anybody in the community wants any versions of this report that was presented tonight, we're more than happy to share that.
I'm just thinking, if I were a contractor in town, or a developer in town, or thinking about it, I would certainly want access to this, and that would help us. They could see what we're seeing and help us with this, because slight changes could really alter this. A change in the economy, we, we've talked about this before, that we think the birth rate is kind of down, because the economy is a little uncertain right now, and young families maybe are delaying having kids. A change in the economy could bring a baby boomlet in this town, or it could just stay the way it is, and that would affect us in just four years.
Sure.
And so it could, it could change some of this, and we need to sort of constantly be monitoring this, I guess. But I, I think that, as we look forward, I guess, you're pretty confident, though, thinking that this district is not going to see, from everything you look at, is not going to see declining enrollment over the next decade.
Correct.
And I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you how confident you are in that projection.
Very confident.
Really? Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Because we'll, we'll be put on the spot on this.
Yeah, great.
And rightly so, because we're trying to figure out, what do we ask the community to support? What's quality? We don't want to be one of those districts who's having to cut every year because our enrollment's declining. I think we're facing enough budget challenges right now without the specter of declining enrollment. So we've got to think about declining enrollment on top of some of the other major, big budget challenges that are facing us in the state right now, in public higher, in public education. That's important for us, and I think that's why we're pressing on this.
Certainly.
Nick, is your, is your phone number on the presentation?
No, it's not. Yeah, right. If you do have any questions, though, Jamie does have my email, and I'd be more than happy to take any later.
So I, I have a question. You know, there, there were a few different, kind of, where do we go from here? But it sounds like your, your company has gotten to the point where they're, you're actually working with districts to develop those types of plans, not, you know, you mentioned, I think it was Oregon School District outside of Madison, but if, do, do you follow up on something like this? Is that a second piece in the process, or how does something like that happen?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, it seems like our projections show that there's, you know, adequate capacity for the next at least five years in your district. So then, maybe three to five years from now, so you have plenty of time per prepare, we would project, or we would recommend a long-range facility planning study, and, and we do do that. So we're kind of one part of that. So an architecture firm would likely be another part, who could help with either expansions onto existing schools, or if another elementary school were to be built, they would help with that. We're the planner and project manager part of that, so we would be able to draw new elementary boundaries if that was the case, either with an expansion of a school or with a new school. We also typically see, when we do this work, we do like a, a committee that's made, like a boundary task force committee that can help. They're composed of members of the public, teachers, other interested stakeholders and parties, that kind of help guide it from the, the public standpoint. So there's public input. So those are kind of the main three areas, I guess, would, would be part of that bigger effort. We typically see that take about 12 months.
Okay.
Do you guys ever go back and, and test your results?
We do.
Right? So 10 years from now, come back and see how close were we? You know, we've done, this is the third one I've done since I've been on the board.
Sure.
And, you know, it's kind of like, where were we last time compared to where we ended up?
Sure.
And that's an important piece, too, because the models are, you know, your guess?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we- The demographic study that this district conducted, to your point, Mike, was in 2017, and of this entire report, one thing that I latch on to is what I call the yield rate. How many students do we yield from each home? And this report talked about 0.5, or a half of a student for every new home. That number in the 2017 report was a little bit higher, but a pretty close. I think it was like .67. Other notable to mention with regard to the fact that, the good news is that we're projecting about 32 student increase per year, PK through 12. Prior to COVID, we had experienced about four years in a row where we were growing anywhere between 50 and 70 students. And that was beneficial to our financial picture, because the way that the state funds schools, it's based on a three-year rolling average. And so when you, you're on a run of four years in a row of 50, 60, 70 students, that helps that three-year rolling average. To see the decline down to 32, which is pretty close to what we've now seen this year, actually, very close to this year. Last year, we went down. And so it, it's good news that we're seeing increasing enrollment as it, as it's applied to, to school funding, but it's not the pace that we were at within that three-year rolling average. And so we still, in the near term, where we will still experience some budgetary influences by a smaller increase in enrollment than what we had been experiencing. And without trying to get into the weeds and explaining more about how the state funds schools, I just really wanted to note that, because the community will hear us talking not only about this report in relation to future planning for our facilities, but also in the near term, that three-year rolling average I mentioned, we went down. We, we went, literally went down in enrollment, and now we're up about 30, but that three-year rolling average is not working in our favor right now. Because it used to be at 50, 60, 70, in that range, and so it's driving down our capacity to be able to fund our normal operations. So this is good news from that financial standpoint, but to be clear, we're on the downside compared to the growth that we had experienced pre-COVID.
And it doesn't sound, sorry, Stacy.
Don't, you go ahead.
And it doesn't sound like that growth is necessarily going to happen equally over the life of this study either. But I was going to ask you the second part to that question. So when, when you, when you work with districts on that planning, is it, is it fair for, for us to ask you now to say, if, if you're making a high-level recommendation, you, you laid out a couple of different ways it could be attacked in the report, but is there one that jumps out to you when, when you look at our situation with some potential growth for elementary level, but pretty flat in terms of middle school, high school, but probably not enough elementary growth to warrant a, a brand-new school being built?
Yeah, I'm going to jump onto that before he answers.
Sure. So I guess that, I mean, to me, there's a couple of things that it sounds like, but I'd just be curious for somebody who's, who's done that work and worked with other districts, what, what that, hey, if, if I'm sitting on the school board side, this is the, the way I would lean based on what I'm seeing right here.
And I'm just going to ask, before you get into that, if we were to work with you on a second stage with much of what Todd is suggesting, would we be able to provide some direction in terms of our values, too? Because it wouldn't only be a numbers game for us.
Of course.
It would be, do we like to keep a middle school concept? And so we want our sixth through eighth graders to- And so we want our sixth through eighth graders to stay together. Or are we, I mean, I think that some of those things would be at least as important to us in driving a decision. So could we lay those things out as you're looking at the scenarios Todd is talking about?
Sure. I think your question's easier, so I'm going to answer that first.
Okay, all right.
We have, we worked with the Sun Prairie Area School District a couple of years ago on a large, long facility, long-range facility planning effort. They opened up, they went from 10 elementary to middle, one high, to 10 elementary, three middle, two high. So they added a new middle school and a new high school. So we had to redraw their boundaries. The board gave the Boundary Task Force that was composed of all of those public members and other stakeholders, I think it was five, like, main criteria points. The first being to balance equity across all of the schools. And then the other four were to be the most efficient with transportation and a couple other ones that I can't remember. So those were like the overarching goals provided by the board, the charges of the board for the Boundary Task Force.
Then you can do Todd's kind of work.
Sure. And for each of our options that we provided to the district, we were able to provide them with, I guess, a one-pager that, for each option A, B, C, D, that evaluated all of our, all of those five different charges for each of those options. Regarding your question, yeah, it does not seem like there would be enough enrollment growth at the elementary school level to warrant a fifth elementary school through 2035, but it could by 2040. So that, you know, even looking longer than what our projections have, have done through 2040, could warrant that fifth elementary school. I mean, grade group shifts, there's a lot of school districts who work, we work with that, do a lot of different grade groupings, intermediate school or intermediate school, like the Oregon School District where they have, I think it's grades five and six in a separate school, and then seven and eight in middle, nine through 12 in high. Also, expansions onto schools would, would probably work. I don't know if your, your school sites still have, you know, a large enough site area to have an expansion or all of the things that come with that. So that would be something else that needs to be looked at further.
I think one of the things that would help us in a, in a shorter term of the next 10 years is if our students, elementary students, were distributed more evenly over the, the three large buildings and, and all four elementary schools generally. The challenge there, obviously, is it's never popular to redraw district elementary boundaries, attendance boundaries within a district, ever. As much as people think, oh, I just shift people here, if you're that family that's got three kids at Greenwood and you're going to say, now, next year, you're going to have kids that, you're all going to go to a different elementary. Or if you're like Mike Miller and you went to Greenwood and your kids went to Greenwood and you want your kids to go to Greenwood and don't shift us to Rocky Branch, all that becomes, and we can, there are ways, creative ways to work through that. We can do some magnet programs and we can, at some elementaries that might voluntarily get people to do that, there are ways to, and, you know, if Montessori's growth goes up, there are a variety of ways. We've talked about change to middle school concept, that sort of thing. But it's a big one for us. In fact, it could, in the end, be one of the biggest things we face, rather than, it'd be easier to build a new elementary school than to redraw the attendance boundaries within the district.
It's easier to redraw the boundaries when you build a new elementary school than it is without, without building one.
Yeah. When we've worked with other school districts to do a process like that, like the Sun Prairie Area School District that I just mentioned, which is the district I also live in, so it was interesting being part of that. And it was before my daughter was born, too. But there will typically be a mediator that is also hired, and we know, we've worked with a few of them that specifically work on these types of projects, mediating elementary or just attendance area changes in general, and can act as a mediator between the public, the task force, and the school board.
Are there any other questions?
We'll have lots of them going forward, but this is really helpful for us.
Great, of course.
And we know Jamie has your number, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you not only for the work, but for providing this conversation opportunity for us.
Yes, thank you all.
We'll be in touch.
We really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Nice job, Nick. Thanks.
All right, now we have a spotlight. Jenny on community education.
Hello, everyone. I've promised, Dave, I'm going to keep this short. Just to give you a quick update, I always like to say we're a small but mighty team of two. Lauren Kaminsky and I do the communications. We do have Leslie Schradl, who helps with the volunteer as well. She's not full-time, though. So going to talk about social media with our communications and ignore the missing space there. We tell the great stories of our students, our staff, and our district. We want to communicate important information internally and externally. So through social media, that's one way we do it. And I've got just screenshots that I've done. We like to recognize and celebrate our students. So here are a few of our, that we've had recently. Our employees, I'm sure you probably saw the article on Holly with her 42 years, and we've just had some really great relationships with media and getting some coverage on some great stories. And our partnerships and events. And we like to, especially with community ed, as my background, I love to, to recognize and leverage partnerships. So those are a few of the events that we've had recently district-wide. And I'm not, I'm going fast here because this is not what I'm reporting on. Branding of our posts. So as, last year, as I talked about, we were in the thick of rebranding, had a little, some, some delays, and officially, the branding was done and is completed. And now I am, my goal is to make sure that it is carried through in all that we do. And our posts, when it's appropriate, we try to brand them. We're trying to have a certain look so that when we, you know, people recognize it and it's, it's a positive image for our district. A new thing we did that ties into social media but goes beyond it is our e-newsletter. So I'm sure you've seen that, that we're using Constant Contact right now. And the goal this year was to just start realistically with the capacity of, of work that we could do is to come up with, I think Jamie and I talked about four times this year, with the understanding that we will increase it as needed. Sharing our good news and important information with our community. I load all parents and staff on, so they were all, I do an infinite campus dump on it, but people can unsubscribe. So to be clear, a parent could unsubscribe. And then we have a subscribe here. We have put that out in various places. And last I looked, we have over 100 people who have subscribed from outside the district. That was just last week. I include it in a case you missed it section, so we usually have the update from Jamie, something from the school board, any other important information, and then just a lot of really good news that really, most of it was on our social media. This, I thought, was interesting. Our open rate with our last campaign, which just went out beginning of the month, was 71%. Overall, with the, the three that we've sent out, it's a 60% average. And I looked it up because I'm like, that seems really high. And Constant Contact said in, the average for our, for all industries in January, it was a 34.39% open rate. So 70, you know, percent is, 71% is really high. So that's good. People are reading it. Oh, I wanted to point out, too, you'll see we have it in Spanish as well. And that's been something I've been working through, the process of how best to deliver that, because the, the campaign has to be sent in order for it to exist digitally. And so we've got a process down where Natalie Gomez has been part of it, and she has helped distribute it and get it to the right families. So it, it's a day delay right now, but it's been really a good process we've worked out. News media outreach, there's been some intentionality in, in some of the media outreach. Letters to the editor, done that, so that, I've just done a sampling of a few things here. One of them, too, like I invited, jumping to community ed, we had our Jigsaw Puzzle competition and a reporter showed up, and it was just a lot of fun. And it's, it's just a really positive community event. So that is still always on the radar. How do we get our, our good stories out? I heard that last year, there was a story of, I think, Ryan Sharon, the girl who, from Meyer Middle School, and the reporter who wrote the story about her, she had had a stroke. He just won an award for that story. So he just got in touch with me and said, I want an award for that. So that's, I thought that was great. I just talked about this, but we did finalize rebranding, and here are just a few samples of things that we've done. Branding guidelines are on our website. I, I did have to combine the high school branding that existed with the new one, and that was quite an undertaking. But we have official fonts, we've got signature standards in our emails, so I've tried to get the word out to staff. I'll probably be doing another reminder email with step-by-step instructions. I know I, I did that for the school board. Newsletter templates. So we've, as much as it's not my favorite tool, Google Docs is what we're using for our newsletters. And it has to do with the fact that you can share them read-only, which makes them ADA compliant. So I created a standard, kind of a look and told each elementary school, these are the things I want you to have, but you can kind of play around with it and customize it. So like a stay-connected part at the bottom with, which contact information and a header that looks a certain way. So we've done that at each building level, and it is a, I think it's working. And you can send a PDF out as well as a read-only and satisfy the ADA compliance. So we've got standards for our business cards and so on. Oh, and our handbooks, we standardized, too. Website overhaul, put the brakes on it a little bit, and now I am behind the scenes doing a lot of, of work. Where our potential launch date will be this summer. So I've been working behind the scenes at trying to do a lot of cleanup, finding, finding the owners of who are, who are going to be the content owners that I will work with, what needs to be there, what doesn't. And we've determined we're not going to roll the site over, we're actually starting from scratch. My menu choices that I've worked with, the different buildings on are going, they're, I'm getting them Wednesday to the development side, and then they're going to have about a month to actually set up the shell. And I'm getting them pictures and everything. And then we start dropping the information in. So there's going to be some dual work, you know, so we'll have to, our behind-the-scenes website with the, the information that we want to roll out in June while we still have our regular website going. But consistent menus, all the elementary schools, same menu, very, very similar menu at middle school and high school, maybe a little bit of a tweak. But a parent should be able to come in or a community member and know, you know, know where to find things because it's consistent, building to building. It's also scalable on devices, and we've got an app that's going to be very simple to use that the information is pushed to. Community education, partnerships are key. So here are just a few of the partners that we've had in this last year. Fox Ten Books, I had approached them about the Jigsaw Puzzle, and now they're just so excited to do it again because it was really great. Whole Earth Co-op has been great. The Three Sweet Sisters, cake and cookie decorating, we fill those instantly. They cannot offer enough of those. And then Ted Blank Travel, so you probably saw on our last community ed catalog, Alaska. And we've got, I think, four people signed up for Alaska. So how it works is he provides the information session, he is handling all of the details, we are advertising it, and then we get a cut at the end. So he is the expert in it. I love it. I don't have to plan any of the logistics, and I think it's going to be a great partnership. Our goal is to do one trip a year with him. The other thing, too, Hamilton tickets. My predecessor, Monique, got 50 of them before COVID, which was wonderful. So I had 50 to sell, and they went in 15 minutes. And our system glitched. We had reserved tickets that couldn't be sold online, or so we thought, and they went out from under us, and the person who showed up for them couldn't get them. So I did a panicked phone call and, to the Orpheum, and they called me right back and said, somebody just turned in another 50 tickets, group sales, you want them? I'm like, yes. So we sold those as well. So we have 100 people going to Hamilton on the same day, two separate shows. We've got the same bus coming, taking one group, coming back, and then taking the next group. So that was pretty exciting. Some of the other things, we did an Osceola Railway Colors trip, which was beautiful, and Mosaic Sculpture Garden trip to Footloose. We try to continue offering different trips. Here are the numbers. I pulled off just the number of classes we've offered, classes held, and the number of registrations. So you can see we are on the upward swing. Fall of 2019, prior to COVID, there were 100 classes offered, 86 sailed, 86 were held, and 11, just under 1,200 registrations. So then we, big dip, you can see, and now we're up to 83 classes, 72 that are in progress. And the number's even higher for, but we're at 792. So we're, we're moving up and we're heading in the right direction. I would also say that the number of classes offered is just one measure, because you can offer a ton of classes, but, you know, I think the classes held is important, too, to see what is our cancel rate? Because how are we spending our time? But from what I met with community educators on the Western Corridor of Wisconsin, and it sounds like we are very fortunate, a lot of community ed departments are not bouncing back the way we are. There was competition that came in, and they're finding that they don't have the marketing leverage that we have. And I feel very grateful that we're bouncing back. Volunteer program, as I mentioned before, Leslie Schradl's our coordinator, she's wonderful. So far, we've had 594 volunteer applications. That was as of last week. So we do require volunteers to apply every year. That doesn't mean we run the background check every year, that's every four years. But it, it makes sure that the person is in the right school and the right fit for what they want to do. We also have five Meyer Middle School students help out in the elementary programs. At the end of the day, they're, they go to their various elementary schools. Six step participants and nine Rotary readers. And on the bottom left, you'll see, I just wanted to remind, I said, the online application, and that we do have background check standards, and we do have them posted so that people understand, and it's very clear. And we have, last year, we had developed volunteer guidelines and field trip guidelines as well. So what's next? I mentioned website overhaul. E-newsletter may become monthly. We just want to get it out as often as it needs to be out and just step up the frequency and the targeted communication as the district needs. For community ed, we want to just keep the partnerships and having the locally grown offerings. Anybody wants to teach a cooking class? Looking for that right now. It's really hard to find. One big trip a year. And then my advisory council, I'm really looking to, I've had some, some, some people not show to meetings, Bob. So, but we've just had some turnover, and it's time to add some, some more to it. And with volunteer, we just want to continue to provide a safe and successful experience for the students, the staff, and for the volunteer. So what questions you have?
Thank you, Jenny. This is really good. This is really a program to be proud of, and you've, you've got a lot to cover here. It's not just community ed, and it's not just communications. You've got the volunteer program, you've got all this stuff. And it all seems to be going really well, and that's a lot for you to juggle. So I really appreciate your work on this, and especially the quality of the work. Just a couple things as clarification, if anybody is wondering, you keep talking about branding, which we kind of know what you mean, but other people might say, that's a business term. What are you talking about branding for? Branding simply allows us to consistently present the district so that when people see stuff that comes from us, it looks alike and they know immediately it comes, it's River Falls District, it's not Hudson or somebody else. Just have this consistency to the way it looks. So that's really what branding is, and it really works to streamline stuff and help people consume information better. So I wanted to put that out there. Another is, as you're talking about community ed here and, and where we're at and why do we do community ed, one of the reasons for this, not just it's good for our community, but it's also our role as a school board, is we realize and we're very conscious of the fact that of the majority, a significant majority of the voting age population in this district doesn't have kids in the district, but they pay taxes. And this, you know, what we do in this school district has value to them, too, and we don't want to forget those folks and the fact that we really are community school and we want to engage everybody in the community in what we're doing. So I think that's an important part. And just looking at your array of offerings here, it's, it's done a good job of appealing to a broad range in the community.
Thank you. I think it's also important, too, that we are opening up our buildings that taxpayers, they're paying for them, and that we show, we're showing a good use of, this isn't just for the students during the day, these are facilities that you paid for and you can use them.
I, I would say, too, I've been really impressed with the amount of stuff coming out. You know, now we're dealing with kind of two local papers and especially the Pierce County Journal has been really good about covering some of our stuff, but an awful lot of people now aren't watching the paper. You know, 10 or 15 years ago, everybody watched the River Falls Journal, you knew what was going on in the schools and all that. So now, how do people find out? Well, I think that through the efforts, and it's really been noticeable here the last year or two, that you're pushing lots- or two, that you're pushing lots of stuff out on these social media platforms. I'm seeing lots of really cool stuff coming out on Facebook, et cetera, which talks about a lot of the really, not just constructive, but cool stuff going on in our district that maybe doesn't even, wouldn't have gotten attention in the newspaper, but just what happened last week at Greenwood, for example, and just all these little kinds of things keep popping up. And whether people are liking it or not, I know people are seeing it, and it's important for people in this community to know what's going on in the schools.
Well, and I always think I have the best job. I mean, I get to go around and see the really cool things going on and then just share it. I mean, it's fun. So I have, I try to make a point to get in a different building every week, and I just walk around, and I'll just, you know, say, tell me what's going on. And that's usually where I can find some just things that teachers don't think are cool, but you're like, no, this is really cool. And artwork, I love to take pictures of artwork in the buildings and get that posted as well.
Thank you not only for your presentation, but for your really strong work. And make sure that you extend our thanks to Lauren as well, the other part of your small but mighty team. You're making a big difference, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we are going to move on to reports, and I am very pleased to welcome our new student rep. This is Ciara Roberson. Ciara Roberson. And she is going to be our student representative from today through the end of this year. Welcome. Our previous student had a change in her work schedule, and so we miss her, but we're glad to have you, Ciara. There's one that's really kind of wonky.
There you go. Hi, my name is Ciara Roberson. I'm a senior at Renaissance Academy. I've been going there for about two years. I plan to go to college for a major in psychology with a minor in communications and then go off to law school. Some cool things at the Renaissance that are going on is that our group that we have, that the volunteer who won that award, he hosts. Those groups are twice a week now, which is really nice for all the students who are involved because it gives us a place to be heard and to be seen. With our new small space, we have to find a way to make it look a little bit prettier. So we've been finding little things to do. So like, we had a door decorating competition to make students feel welcome there. It's not the best place, I'm not going to lie, but it's a pretty nice place, and I'm glad that, I appreciate it that I can be a part of this board meeting.
Great. Well, maybe next time you could bring a picture of the winning door so that we could see. Great. All right. Well, we look forward to having you with us. The superintendent has nothing more to say because he was so heavily involved in the demographic study, right?
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. So we're going to move on to number three, which will be administrative reports, an update on where we are in the strategic plan. And we will start with the high school, Renaissance, and River Falls High School.
We'll be brief. It really is more of the same, and that's a good thing. So we continue to focus in on learning to inform our instruction, and that's a big shift for a lot of our staff. We really, again, are meeting with our PLC leaders monthly. We're networking with our paraprofessionals. Retention and communication is important for us in that. We have talked through our BLT, a lot of kind of what would be things that maybe departments were focusing in on instead of PLC work, and that's been good that we have kind of put that in a different vein and prospect. We only have five more late starts, though, this year with the loss of some of the in-service days due to inclement weather. So we hope that we can continue to gain traction with that. We're optimistic with maybe some potential calendar changes coming up into next year that we will get more consistent time at the high school levels for curricular and instruction work. So that's an update from the high school. I'll turn it over to Chris.
Just before you go, could you just give a one-minute thing about why it is so important to have that uninterrupted time to do the PLC work?
Yeah, so we don't, it is very difficult as a building principal to build a master schedule similar to what the middle school has, maybe with some common prep time. And our school calendar right now is not necessarily a district-wide calendar that fully adopts the late start policy as other districts do. So David and I and our calendar committee members, our BLT representatives are looking at some alternatives to give us the time where we could roughly have about 30 of the 39 weeks in a late start. That will give us essentially an hour each week in some of our non-short weeks or our first few weeks of school to really focus and work in on that work, whereas right now we're waiting for in-service days or one maybe late start a month. And we just kind of feel like it's the car with four tires, and one of them seems to be flat. It just never runs well. And so our hope is that if we get that levels of consistent time, we can make significant progress in the areas of teaching and learning and move forward with our staff.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, so we, we're a little smaller, so we have a consistent time on Fridays that we meet as a team. And right now, we're kind of focusing in two areas. One would be, you know, we're going to have a new space with some new labs and some opportunities to kind of plan a curriculum that's a little more expansive for our students, help them prepare for college. And, you know, now we have a lab that we can teach chemistry. We're hoping to do that along with some more CTE offerings. So we're excited about that. That's kind of what a lot of our planning is centered around. Also, I should mention, we have our guidance counselor, Jerry Mueller. So we've had a pretty sharp focus on working with Jerry and our student support team to help kids kind of direct them to the next step after high school. So things that we've included would be college tours, financial aid meetings with families. What else, Jerry? You can help me out here.
CVTC coming to visit.
CVTC visits, just helping students, and not just a one-and-done in the guidance office, but just sort of working with them over time to help them with the plan so they have some direction for the next year.
Middle school gets a free pass tonight. Both administrators had a family conflict, and we gave them the permission to take a pass this evening.
They get to go first next time. So, all right. All right, elementary folks.
All right, I'm Chris Camrath at Westside, and I'll kind of be our spokesman, but the peanut gallery can chime in here if they would like. So similar to what Kit said, consistency and more of the same, but I'll go through a few highlights there. Grade-level department collaboration around common form of assessments. So we're very thankful to have those Thursday mornings where we're working hard to collaborate in our grade level or departments. That has continued, and we're very thankful for that. Principal and coach connection. It looks a little different in each building, but what's consistent is the principal and the coaches helping and supporting the collaboration that is happening. So at Westside, we do it by the half hour each month or each week. We're in a different grade level, working with them, both hearing them, supporting what they're doing, but also working to support them. So that's been a very good and positive thing, and a lot of positives have come out of that time. Data digs, that's what we use our October, our January in-service days for, is wrapping around and collaborating at each grade level and supporting the learning that's going on, and then adjusting our team timer interventions is one of the action items that comes out of that. And so at several of the buildings, there's been a little bit of adjustment of how that happens. So example, at Westside, due to the in-service that we had over here at the high school, we adjusted and used a little bit different format, and that worked very well for us, a little more efficiency, while also using some of the team for one aspect and having our literacy coach kind of trail around and support. I know at Rocky Branch, they also use a little bit of a different process for data digs this year, and they found that to be very helpful. So continue playing with that and getting feedback from staff and how that went, well, and what we can keep adjusting. The SSTs, so kind of the bottom out you see there, continuing those, I would say they happen generally once a week. Oftentimes, they're heavier kind of in the mid-fall to support students and things we're seeing, and then heavier again now after new data comes out in January. So at Westside, we have them on Tuesday mornings. I think that's pretty consistent across the elementaries. And so that's another form of collaboration that's continuing, that we're kind of tweaking as needed, whether it be the frequency or those invited. Biweekly professional staff development, so that's something at Westside, and I would say Rocky, I think, too, does every other week. At Westside, really trying to utilize different forms of professional development to happen at those meetings, and that's been a very, that's been a positive for us. So we've been a good thing that we've enjoyed and hope to continue. Development of structured specialists, this is something that the principal team has worked really hard at this fall, and we kicked off in November, having specialists start collaborating. We kind of did it all at one site, at Westside, in our NPR and library in the beginning, and then now the last couple months have spread out and are at different elementaries. So each of us has two specialists, whether it be music art, fayed library, or different levels of special education. And that's been a great thing to see, the collaboration kind of evolve in those groups. All were at a little bit different level, and so we've really enjoyed working with those groups and continuing to do so. So that's the first Thursday of each month. You want to scroll down? So creation of new building mission statement, that's been something that Westside has been working on this year. And the collaboration around that has been really, really exciting. Today, our building leadership team created our kind of draft, so we're in the process of seeking feedback from our staff at that. So something we've been collaborating around. And then a common thing at the bottom there, I put use of Fast Bridge and EduClimber data and utilizing that. I want to kind of highlight Rocky Branch, it's done a lot of work with their literacy coach on what that looks like. That's something Ashley mentioned, she couldn't be here tonight. At Westside, we've been using that in our data digs, has been really, really helpful. And our other buildings, it's all been using it, just maybe it looks a little bit different. So those are what we've been doing around collaboration. Anything I missed?
I just wanted to highlight the piece about bringing specialists together and the sped folks together to do collaboration on Thursday mornings, I think is a pretty impressive thing that's happened. We met as an elementary principal team, and we all had to be on the same page about what it meant for all of our folks that are spread across the four buildings to come together and to do collaboration in a way that they haven't necessarily done in the past. And so I personally have been really proud of the work that's happened there. And then, say, at my building, I've got the LD teachers and the EL teachers, and watching those groups of people find common goals, common standards, building assessments off of those, and having authentic collaboration. I just think it's really impressive. I think that in traditional PLC format, collaboration time for sure is all about grade level, at least at the elementary. And so I think the next level above that is doing kind of what we've done in terms of bringing the specialists together. So I'm pretty proud of that. I don't know how you guys feel.
Agreed. Agreed. I'm Nate Sherman. I'm the principal at Greenwood. And I was also going to just speak quickly about the specialist collaboration. I also think it's pretty impressive, the work that we've been doing, but I just want to mention, too, it hasn't come without some challenges, and that's to be expected when you're asking people to engage in something that's different than what they've done before. It may have been easier to start down this collaborative pathway had they not ever been meeting, because in some instances, we're having to undo some things. Not that that work wasn't valuable, it's just different than what they had done before. So I think the last time we spoke to this, I talked about the education component and how we tried to educate teams about the different elements of collaboration and how to collaborate and what that process should look like. That's not a one-and-done. That's something that has to continue, which is why we've divided these teams into a couple per building so that we can be there to support them and also to hold them accountable, which doesn't have to be a negative term, right? Accountability is something you can do for people. It doesn't have to be something you do to people. So we've had some, we've had some storming, which is part of the process. You know, you form your groups, you create your norms, and if you're talking about the right things, if you're talking about things that you're passionate about, there's going to be some disagreements, and that's good. So we use that for, you know, to help us move forward. So we've had some really good work being done there, too. One of the challenges that comes right now is that we're meeting just one time a month with our specialist groups. So Kit was asked about the importance of having those ongoing and regular meetings, and something we're going to have to navigate with those teams is, are we going to be ready to increase the number of meetings that they're having? Can we do that within a framework that's reasonable for their workload? Because these people are also traveling from different buildings to a central location, which our grade-level teachers don't have to do. But collaborative work is cyclical. It's a process that tends to repeat itself. You look at what it is you're trying to get students to know, you're figuring out how you're going to know if they know it by analyzing data, then you make instructional adjustments to it, and then you repeat. And when you have a month off in between, like what Kit's been having, there's just no, you can't keep the momentum going. So I'm excited to hear that potentially we're going to have some updates to the calendar that's going to allow that to happen. As someone that's passionate about collaboration, it's essential to get out of it what you want. If you don't have that, it's really hard for your people to buy into it and feel like we're getting something worthwhile from this. Instead, they might be thinking, man, I'd sure like to have my own time to get things ready for my classroom. So crucially important that that happens at the high school. One last thing I wanted to mention, the data digs. We do have three big data digs during the year because they align with our benchmark assessments. But please don't misunderstand, we are looking at data all of the time. It needs to happen weekly. It's just a different type of data. And we've been using Fast Bridge and EduClimber, as Chris mentioned. At Greenwood, we tip things upside down a little bit, and instead of focusing on our 30-minute team time, we really dug in to how that data reflected our core classroom instruction. And one of the main reasons is, that might be 90 minutes of literacy every single day as opposed to 30 minutes of a team time block. So we're having teachers audit how they're spending their time, they're talking with their colleagues about it, and in addition, not just grade level, but some vertical meetings. Where kindergarten and first grade are meeting together, second and third, first and second. So collaboration can happen across or up and down the different grade levels. So just a few things to add.
Well, it's awfully exciting to hear about it. One of the things that I'm always impressed by when I hear about authentic collaboration is how it supports not only teachers but students. It's for everybody in the district when it's done well and right. One question of clarification, you mentioned, I think, Chris, student support teams, and I'm not sure that everybody here knows exactly what that is. Could you just give us a really quick description of what that is to make sure that everybody knows?
All right. SSTs are student support meetings. Our meetings, we'll kind of get a mixed group of staff to help support a student. So in our building, I think it's pretty common, a teacher would nominate and kind of fill out a brief form of, hey, this is a kiddo, and here's kind of the things we'd like to talk about. The team always includes the principal, the counselor, the school psychologist, and then other people may be invited, such as our social worker, intervention teachers, classroom teacher, depending on time of year, last year's classroom teacher, and there may be other people invited based on the needs. And so those are really helpful collaborative meetings of kind of talking about where things are at, going through goals. And then oftentimes, once we have them, we'll sit, you know, set a checkup for like six weeks or so and say, all right, let's reconvene with the goal being to help and problem solve, and then see how that process is going.
Thank you, because I think it's important for people to realize that our collaboration is not only for students in the aggregate, how I'm going to teach fourth-grade math or whatever it is, but also to support the needs of individual students through collaboration. So thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Couple thoughts as I'm listening, and I'm reminded of a good teaching and coaching practices to teach the whole picture and then the parts. And I was reminded in listening here, so just to share a couple of things. This was a report by our administrative team regarding one piece of a five-year strategic plan. That strategic plan has five goal areas. Tonight, this is about goal area one, holding high expectations for student learning. And then inside of that big goal area, we've identified one of the specific objectives of supporting collaborative, supporting a collaborative teaching culture focused on students, student learning. So you just heard about a lot of the detail, and I'm reminded of, it's like attorneys that other professional groups meet and collaborate and compare, and they learn from each other. Doctors, they meet in teams and different people that are working on an individual patient, just like we're doing a data dig and looking at an individual student and bringing in an SST, a team of teachers that are addressing individual needs of students. To your point, it's not just the large group, it's what are the specific needs of each child, and then aligning specific interventions so that no child is falling behind their grade-level peers. And these are a lot of the little pieces to that whole big picture that we do that is some really deliberate, purposeful, meaningful, and impactful work that help all of our students to succeed. So thanks for your leadership with all of that.
All right. We are going to move on to action items. And before the board today, we have And before the board today, we have minutes, meeting minutes from the January 23 regular Board of Education meeting. We have bills that have been submitted for payment. We also have recommendations regarding employment. So at this point, we have a motion to approve minutes, bills and employment as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye opposed? The motion is carried. Now we will have a report about the educational program committee, and I'll turn to you, Ellen, as chair.
Yeah, our last meeting was February 6th. It was a good meeting. We got in some really good issues and had some very good conversations. First off, we worked with Nate Wells, presented to us about the RF4C, the basically four-year-old kindergarten providers and the contracts we've got. This is something we need to review each year. We had some questions and he was able to respond to us or get back to us with information about who the current providers are for that and how we're moving forward. And there's a slight change in fees for next year. So anyway, that was approved. This is an action item, so I guess I will move approval of those contracts.
Of the RF4C?
RF4C, provider contract for 2324 school year.
Is there, thank you, Ellen. Is there a second? Thanks, Bob. One of the things that we talked about during the meeting had to do with equity of fees and equal opportunity for transportation. And I know that that's an issue that, that we're going to get more detail about as time goes by. But for these purposes, we just need to approve the contracts. So we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye opposed? The motion is carried. Ellen?
And then we had some, some updates and informational items. Mary Beth Elliott, who's one of our current co-interim directors of academic services, talked to us about summer school, where we are with that. That's basically coming back, second year coming back from COVID. There's still a work in progress, some good offerings. We had a good discussion with some ideas and suggestions and things about that. So and some, maybe some changes in staffing and how we do, how we get staffing to offer some of the courses and that. So that was a good update. And she was there throughout this, and I just had a subsequent meeting with her and Amy, our two co-directors, the next week. Just want to say again that both of them are just really doing a good job and holding us together for, during this transition period. So appreciate the work that they're doing. Also very appreciative of Melissa Hansen, who came before us to talk about career and technical education in the district. The governor has declared February Career and Technical Education Month. So it was an opportunity for us to hear about, again, what we're doing in the district. And then also for us to transition into, Melissa also talked to us about the college fair, which coincided with registration night, what we're doing with that, how that ties into our academic and career planning in the high school. The information that goes out to parents and families and students, shared a lot of that information with us so that we could see it and give feedback. Talked about where it's available on the web generally for, for students and all that. So there was some really good, good conversation around that. Appreciate the work of that whole team, not just Melissa, but the rest of the counseling office and administrative team and the teachers who are so much involved in that. And then we had a unique proposal come in front of us. In the past, we've, we've had, pre-COVID especially, each year, there's typically one or two groups who travel outside the district during the summer for, with our students. And one of the things we've talked with our faculty about is, are there less expensive options that also might be available to our students? Because right now, a trip to Europe, for example, is really, can be really be expensive, which means only a small number of our students really have it as an option. And Melissa Sabelko, is that how you say your last name? Sabelko? Came in front of, before us. She's a high school French teacher. And she had a proposal to do a trip in the summer of 2024 to Quebec with our students, which is a lot less expensive than going to France, and had the itinerary laid out and all of that. Really a cool trip, very different kind of trip for our students. And it was good for us to hear that. We'd like to see some more options, especially some more affordable options and, and how students can help raise money. They had some suggestions about how students would be able to raise money for this trip. Again, that's 15, 16 months out. So this one requires action too, right, Stacy? So I will move that we approve the, the application for the summer 2024 field trip from the French department to Canada.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments?
And then our next meeting.
Oh, no, not quite.
We didn't vote.
We haven't voted.
All in favor, say aye.
Just said it, aye. Everybody, okay, all right. Opposed, the motion is carried. All right, Ellen, you can finish up.
Thank you. I was just jumping ahead to the next one, wasn't paying attention, sorry. Our next meeting will be on March 6th. And I think probably one of our primary things will be to begin to learn about what we're doing in the curriculum review process. In other words, how does our curriculum get approved? What's in our curriculum? Mary Beth and Amy have both been working on that. Not that we don't have one in place, but just reviewing it right now. What changes do we need to make? How can we continue to get participation all across the board in it? So that will be our next committee meeting in March. And you'll hear about it at the committee meeting and then probably at a regular March meeting as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now we will turn to finance and facilities. And Todd, I'm wondering if it's okay with you if we take point number two first, rather than the approval of buses, because we have Jeff Seeley on the phone right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So Jeff can't be here tonight. He's not feeling well. So he's on the phone. And I think Lynette and Jamie, you will talk with us about the defeasance. And then we will take action and then we'll go back for a committee summary and the approval of the buses.
Are we good?
Stacy, is it appropriate for us to welcome Lynette as a new?
We absolutely, I should have thought of that.
We did at the finance meeting last week.
Yes, of course we should. So you start with that, Todd.
I'm on the streak.
Yeah, so the, is it, is that a low blow?
We got there.
Sure. So Lynette Edwards is our, our new finance director, or Finance and Facilities Director, and joined us end of January. So I think last week, we're on day.
10, I think.
Yeah, so now we're up to maybe 17 or 18. So yeah. Came to us from Osceola, but has worked in a couple other districts in a similar, similar role and, and was able to participate in the, the committee meeting last week for the first time and, and share some information on how things are going to run moving forward.
And I've heard rave reports.
Well, that's good. That's good. Thank you for the nice welcome.
I'm not sure if your mic's on. Is it green light? Yep, you're good.
Are we good?
Yep.
Told I don't project very well, so I'll do better. So we're going to move right into the defeasance. So this is something that the district has been planning for quite some time. Not new process. The last time the district defeased debt was back in 2017. And it's really just an opportunity for us to use some additional levy authority to pay down some, some future debt. And what, what happens is the additional levy gets moved to an escrow account, and it stays there until we're ready to make that payment on the debt. And we have that earmarked for a 2025 payment. The goal really for defeasance is to help manage the levy rate. So districts use this all across the state rather than having fluctuating ups and downs in our levy rate. This is a way that districts can, can utilize a tool to, to manage that mill rate. And it's advantageous for not only the district, but for taxpayers as well. So the goal, the number one goal is to manage the mill rate or the levy rate. We do see some tax, or I'm sorry, interest savings on that. It's kind of a, a second benefit to, to doing this. So. Anything else you want to add, Jamie?
No, the, I guess, I think you, you covered kind of the, the general essence of the why behind this fancy word called a defeasance. And you mentioned that we did this once before, back in 2017. There's a lot of districts that do this. There's a process. Jeff Seeley, who's on the phone, works for Ellers. Ellers works with our district and consults with us regarding financial decisions of this sort and how to best manage our pre-existing debt. And I'll, I'll just add that part of what the defeasance accomplishes in stabilizing the levy, as Lynette mentioned, this would help, this will help the board to, as we move closer to a February of '24 referendum. And we're still in the planning stages of that, to include a demographer study, to include a facility study, to include a wealth of community engagement. There's a process that will be unfolding in the coming weeks and months as we get closer to that February date. But the point is that this defeasance will help to somewhat neutralize the potential tax impact for property taxpayers. If a referendum were to pass, this defeasance helps to kind of stabilize and minimize the potential tax impact of a referendum. And so the board started talking about this in August. You talked about it again at the last, last week's finance committee meeting. Tonight, it's, you're being asked to formally approve a resolution that now sets into motion what Lynette said by parking money in that escrow account to pay down some existing debt early, and that's how you help to stabilize the levy over time. Jeff, you're on the phone. Is there anything else that you wanted to add to that?
Well, you guys did a great job laying this out. Maybe just a couple things. So this is the, the formal board action that's required. Obviously, last October, you set your levy with this in mind, and you, you had a million dollars additional that you levied. The law does allow you to levy to pay your existing debt service. That includes, as Lynette mentioned, regulating your, your mill rate, which generated the extra money. This does allow you some flexibility when you're doing capital planning or operating referendum planning in the future. So that's the main purpose of it. The transaction will be finalized, will be closing on March 2nd. The money will be transferred on March 1st. And then the escrow will be in effect for two years, taking care of the interest that's accrued on that 2025 maturity that's being defeased and then paying off that maturity or that part of the maturity in 2025.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
I think at this, let's have a motion and then we can have discussion.
Stacy, I'll, I'll move to, wait, I got to pull up the resolution. I know it was kind of a mouthful here. I would move to approve resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2018A dated July 12th, 2018.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a second?
I'll second that, but only if Todd can say that again. From memory.
We can have discussion. I don't think that's going to go. But I put you down anyway for seconding. Okay.
So I asked this question last week and I, I'm pretty certain, as I read through all this, based on how specific it is referencing a certain bond series that, but there was some, some discussion, and since we have Jeff, I just was going to ask him to clarify. There's no way to do something like this and then pick your, whatever your highest rate debt or bond would be. You have to apply it to the one that you're specifically calling out, right? There's, there's no way to do it and say, actually, the, the, we're paying a higher rate on, on a different bond that we've got. Could, could we apply to that one? There's, there's no way to do something like that as part of the process.
Well, you can, you can apply to whatever maturity meets your goals. And so you could go through and take a look at which maturity might have the highest interest rate and therefore conceptually, if you pay that off, that would create the most savings. But that's if your target or your goal is to create savings. If your goal is to manage your, your tax rate and you're coming up on some needs such as an operating referendum or, or capital needs, then you'll want to target the maturities that best, or provides you the greatest advantage to achieving that goal. And, and that's the goal that we are looking at. There are some savings associated with this, but the main purpose of it was your future planning and structuring your debt or doing a little restructuring that would help with that process.
Yeah.
So yes, you can choose which maturity, but it all depends on what your goal is.
Sure, that makes sense. Thank you. I, yeah, I, I guess it makes sense. It would be great if you could accomplish all of it. I think the, the bigger goal in this case is, is the timing of the maturity. It would be, I guess I, I asked the question because my, my fear is that we're, we're in a less than ideal interest rate environment compared to where we had been the last couple of years. So.
Anything else, Bob?
I know we're going to be experiencing some interest rates or interest savings by prepaying or paying down two years from now. But the million dollars would be sitting in escrow for two years. Is there any earnings opportunities for us as far as interest income, that type of thing?
Yeah, and, oh, Jeff, do you want to take this or do you want me to?
Yeah, whatever you prefer. I can take it. Or if you want to give it a whirl, go ahead.
Yeah, so we're projecting sixty, just over $66,000 of interest in that escrow account, which would then be used to help pay that, that interest.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? I think it's important to point out that one of the responsibilities for a board member is fiscal responsibility. And being fiscally responsible is complicated. We need to rely on a lot of advice and insight from professionals. This is one example of doing something that is, in some sense, complicated, but it really serves the district's long-term needs. It's really important work. So at this point, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. And since this is a resolution, I'm going to be asking, do I need a roll call on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need a roll call vote for this one. So Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
I'm saying yes, Cindy. The motion is carried. Thank you, Jeff. Feel well soon. We'll talk to you later.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, thanks, Lynette. So Todd, why don't we go back and you can pick up a summary of the meeting as well as the first approval?
Sure. So I'll do a summary of the meeting first. We, we will have a resolution to approve the purchase of two, two buses that was discussed and recommended by the Finance and Facilities Committee. And Todd Burnett from the Transportation Department was here and went through some details with, with that as well. So we had a long conversation regarding the defeasance in escrow that we just went through. Lynette shared with us a pretty in-depth budget tool that she's familiar with and is planning to, to use. Say that, say the name of the company again.
It's RW Baird.
RW Baird. So we would be sending them a big data upload. They would put it into this model, and then you have the flexibility to manipulate it and kind of play with different, different projections, state budget projections, enrollment projections, which we just had a long discussion about. And so we'll see more from that in the coming meetings. We got a brief review of our annual audit, no items that were of any, any issue there. Everything was in good order. We talked additionally about referendum planning for 2024, or February of 2024, and kind of where, where we're at in that process and, and how things are going there. So. I think that was it. I would then go back to item number one and make a motion that we would purchase two international route buses from Midstate with budgeted funds from the '22, '23 school year. year.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Cindy.
I just was going to mention, I didn't mention the cost. I think it came to around $110,000 for each of those buses, and that was slightly lower than the other quote that we had. Todd told us it was up. Don't remember the exact number. It was roughly $15,000 more expensive than the last time we bought buses a couple of years ago. So we're getting hit there with some inflation, too. And I think he said the ones we're getting meet the specs that we order, but if we had to put in a special order for something, it'd be a 12-month lead period. So we'll probably be having to look at the buses that we'd like to buy next year. We'll probably have to be looking at that pretty quickly, too.
Stacy, it just, I think most of us were at that meeting, but we should mention, I was really impressed. We had a good discussion with Todd about what's going on in our transportation operation here, the bus garage, and just how well that bus operation runs and how efficient they are and how we maximize the impact of that.
And you mean Todd Burnap, not our Todd.
Yeah. A different Todd. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Excuse me. From the, from transportation, yes, that Todd. And it was just, it's good. Each year, we have this discussion, and it was just a good time for us to learn again and get reminded about what goes on at the transportation operation and how well that works and what good leadership we've got in that building, so.
I think we should also note that we have a two-bus-per-year type of schedule as far as purchasing. The average lifespan is, we put it, keep it on the routes for about 10 years, I believe.
At least.
And then we cycle that to a backup bus and that type of thing. So we are replenishing the supply of the fleet every 10 years, which is good. We want our kids riding in buses that are operable and whatnot, so.
We also...
Bus, I'm sorry.
Nope, you go ahead.
One of the buses that will be retired is 15 years old.
Oh, yeah.
We've gotten the life out of that one, for sure.
I think it's important for our community to know, too, that our bus garage is really small, and so it's hard to find buses that will actually literally fit inside our bus garage because of the length. And so there is, it's inches to spare in terms of fitting them into our, into our bus garage. All right, anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. I'm just going to draw people's attention to the fact that you are not seeing a Personnel Committee report. That's because the Personnel Committee will be meeting next week. So we did not have one since the last regular board meeting. And so now we are going to move on to letter D, which is related to the easement agreement for our property in Man Valley, and Jamie is going to...
We've discussed this at the board level. It's taken a while for the city to work with their planning department to get all of the paperwork together, but it's presented to you tonight to seek your approval on an easement, which the property involved is the 37 acres west of town that is currently used by our FFA alumni and our high school ag students. And it's just a strip along the far southerly edge of our property where the city needs to bury some utilities. And when that's done, it'll also provide a future trail for some of the additional development that is going on in the Man Valley area. So this is a request for you to approve that easement with the city.
This is the issue that the city brought to our attention during our most recent School Board-City Council joint meeting. Well, at this point, we have a motion to approve the perpetual municipal utility and trail easement agreement for the Man Valley property. Thank you, Bob. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments? Any discussion?
Jamie, what's your thought on, obviously, it's going to be a trail put in there. What's your thought on effect of marketability of that property? Is that positive, a negative, by having a trail running through it? Or, I know it's on the edge of the property, but...
I move the belief that that property will continue to increase in value for the district. The more development that goes on in Man Valley is going to increase the value of that property. We're blessed right now for how we use it and the partnership that we have with the FFA alumni. And if and when the day ever comes that we were to consider selling it, it would be nice for us to, at the same time, consider an alternative site and location for the FFA alumni to continue to provide the learning opportunities that they do for our kids. If it has to be elsewhere, that day may come, but I think that property value will continue to grow as development continues in that area.
Trail, you don't see as adversely affecting, no? Okay, I think so.
Anything else? I'll take a roll call on this one as well. Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Todd?
Yep.
Alan?
Yes.
I'm saying yes. Cindy? The motion is carried. Thank you. All right. One of our most responsible, important responsibilities as a school board has to do with oversight and development of policy. And so today, we are approving the second reading of a new school board policy, 352, and it's also the rule, the second rule, related to overnight accommodations for student trips. So at this point, I move that we approve the second reading of New School Board Policy 352, Rule Number Two, Overnight Accommodations for Student Trips. This is the result of a need that is connected to any trips that would be for our kids in the district. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions or comments? We've had extensive conversation about this, especially related to the first reading, but is there anything else? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. The next one is the second reading of a revision to an existing board policy, 130, related to board responsibilities and legal status. So at this point, I move the, that we approve the second reading of revised school board policy, 130, board responsibilities and legal status. This was a very minor change, and it had to do with the fact that the school board does not select textbooks and curriculum. We're putting it, we're making sure that our board policy matches our practice. So I've made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. All right, and then the next one is also a second reading of a revised policy, and this one is related to our school district organizational charts. This was also to make sure that our policy and the charts were in line with a slight revision in terms of job description. So at this point, I move that the board approve the second reading of the revised school board policy, 251, Exhibit 1, 2, Exhibits 1, 2, and 3, the River Falls organizational chart. Is there a second? Thank you, Bob. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Since these are each the second readings, we have had conversation about this previous board meetings. Right now, do we have any proposed items for future agendas? All right, then we're going to move on and schedule some meetings. The Educational Program Committee will meet Monday, March 6, at 6 o'clock. The Finance and Facilities Committee will not have a meeting in March. There will also not be a Personnel Committee meeting in March because we'll have one right at the tail end of February. That meeting will be here in the district office. And now I would like to request a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1C and E for the purpose of preliminary non-renewal of certified staff to discuss contract negotiations with employee groups, potential staff reductions for the 2023-24 school year, and to review and discuss the Board of Education's self-evaluation results. Is there a motion, please?
So move.
Thank you, Alan. Is there, Todd? Okay. I need a roll call. Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Alan? I'm saying yes, Cindy. Thank you, everybody. We are in executive session. Have a good rest of your evening.